We'll now call the common council meeting of June 21st to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski is excused. Alderman Lorick is excused. Alderman Dukniak.
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Gail?
Here.
Guzekowski?
Here.
It all rise from pledge of allegiance. Uh, somebody from robotics, start us out.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that'll get us to the approval of minutes of June 7th.
Here. The June 7 minutes. I'll have to abstain.
Oh.
Have to hold those.
Okay, we'll make a motion to hold. Correct?
Marshall motions to hold the approval of minutes for June 7th.
Guzekowski, a second.
You need a date certain on that list or not? You need a date on it? Hold the... Anything critical on there?
Roll call.
Other person, Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Okay, item four is consideration of a resolution of commendation to Gary L. Hildebrandt, a retiring firefighter. Catherine, if you would please read that in the record.
Certainly. Resolution of commendation to Gary L. Hildebrandt. Whereas Gary L. Hildebrandt was appointed a firefighter on October 30th, 2020, and whereas Gary L. Hildebrandt retired from his position as firefighter effective May 31st, 2022, after 21 years and seven months of dedicated full-time service to the City of Oak Creek Fire Department, and whereas during his years of service, Gary L. Hildebrandt has performed his duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Gary L. Hildebrandt responded to many major alarms utilizing his skills in firefighting and rescue with dedication and without hesitation. And whereas Gary L. Hildebrandt has been an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin and has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. And whereas Gary L. Hildebrandt conducted many tours and participated in fire prevention activities for the children of Oak Creek during his career. And whereas Gary L. Hildebrandt was a member of the department's fire investigation unit responsible for investigating cause, origin, and circumstances of fires within the community. And now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Gary L. Hildebrandt and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Gary L. Hildebrandt. Passed and adopted this 21st day of June 2022.
Thank you, Catherine. Before we go any further, I would like to invite Chief Krasik up. Say a few words on Gary's behalf.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I just want to briefly recognize Gary's career with the Oak Creek Fire Department. As the resolution stated, he spent nearly 22 years serving the community as a firefighter through public education delivery, and maybe most notably as his time as one of our fire investigators. I had the opportunity to serve with Gary when I was battalion chief. Gary was an expert storyteller, both fire service stories and from his time in the army. He will be missed in the organization, and we certainly wish him and his family the best as he starts his retirement. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Council members, any words for Gary? Nothing? Well, if you've ever been in an Oak Creek event, I'm sure you'd recognize Gary. Gary was very active with local 1848 and coming out and doing all the fire activities. If you were in the schools, he was part of a fire prevention week activities. Looking out there, we have a lot of school-aged participants tonight, so I'm sure you would recognize this individual if he came forward. Gary gave us 22 years of service. We really appreciate that. He's touched countless lives here and helped us out in ways we may never know. So, on behalf of myself, the common council, and the citizens of Oak Creek, I want to wish Gary and his family a very happy and long retirement, so. Motion on four, please.
I'll move to approve resolution 12336-062122 of resolution of commendation to Gary L. Hildebrandt, retiring firefighter.
Guzekowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And next, item five, we have a short presentation by the Oak Creek High School Roundtable Robotics Team. Come on up. Need your... Come up to the podium. Guys are gonna be on mic. We're gonna need your names. We don't need the addresses for the record. All right? Make this all formal on you. Pull that down.
Hi, my name is AJ Golombiasky.
I'm Eli Jones. I'm a senior.
My name is Carter Gustafson.
Okay. Feel free to start your presentation for us.
Coming to you live from the Zuned America corporate headquarters in Oak Creek, Wisconsin, it's AJ on the Rapid Reacts Podcast with Carter and Eli. FRC, the biggest FLL regional in the state. FBLA workshop, FarmBot, ParadeBot, MechLab, Steam Fair, and getting recognized by Kevin Scott, the CTO of Microsoft. What has this team not done? All the way from Oak Creek, Wisconsin, we have the amazing Roundtable Robotics Team Number 1792 here today on the Rapid Reacts Podcast.
Now, before we start, I think we should say what we always say at the start of our meeting.
Safety is number one. We are one team. We seek having fun over being right. We are respectful. We are always learning. We are helpful. We work hard. We are RTR. Wow, that's so inspirational. Now, I'm assuming those are your team's core values?
Yeah, they've integrated our team's meetings for the past seven years. We recite these values at the beginning of every meeting. They have a lot of value on our team. Another thing that has a lot of value is being on Rapid Reacts Podcast talks about our amazing achievements over the past three years.
No problem. We were impressed to hear about your team's achievements. But, before we get into that, I have to ask you, why Roundtable Robotics?
The story behind that is pretty simple. Our school is a mascot and we seek to include everyone. So, Roundtable Robotics.
Wow, how riveting. Now, I heard you guys have diversified in the past year, but can you tell listeners exactly how?
Yeah. Like our name suggests, we seek to include everyone equally, which is why we enacted our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. Just make sure that all members on our team understand the importance of including everyone equally and has a desire to invite new members to our team. Up to increase our diversity, building over half of our team being represented in our team. Because of this, we've had amazing new ideas.
Could you elaborate on what those ideas might have been?
Started in the past years with our super duper sponsorship. We help businesses support new teams across the country funding over $36,000. We went to our sponsors and encouraged them to financially assist new teams. 12 FLL and FRC teams were assisted. And this year, we're going to reach more communities in a different way. We made a major impact. As part of our super sponsorship, we connected not only first students, but students from 21 different schools through FBLA.
Whoa, back up. Could you explain a little bit more about what FBLA is?
FBLA stands for Future Business Leaders of America. It is the largest student career business organization in the world. So, we hosted a workshop at the FBLA Regional Leadership Conference at Oak Creek High School called STEM Robotics and Business: How to Engage New Student Members. This event had over 601 members from 21 different schools. Two students moved to 21 schools to enter our workshop to learn more. And they left with information on how to get more involved with their local first teams.
Now, I may be wrong, but didn't the RTR business team create a near-field communication card that allowed the students to take the info you shared back to their schools in an easy and accessible manner?
Yeah, we did. Those are super cool.
Yeah, they really are a unique thing. Now, obviously, you grew first to this event, but if I'm looking at the source correctly, it says that the Oak Creek FLL Regional hosted by RTR is the biggest regional in the state. In 2021, 336 participants, 24 teams, and 75 volunteers.
Our team organized this whole event, and we hosted the event five times now. Every year, we have continued to grow STEM in our local community. Through this, we've measured 13 FLL school teams in our school district, five FLL middle school teams for city shaver, four additional teams in the inner-city Milwaukee public school system, and two community teams for private schools that don't offer STEM classes. Both FLL school and FLL challenge, we ensure students continue their loyalty to STEM and are encouraged to join our team in the future, continuing our mission of sustainability.
Wow, hosting an event that big must have been difficult, and it is definitely no small feat. We heard that your team has started a new project to increase your team's knowledge in STEM careers. The Festo MechLab!
This year, our team started taking a certification called the NC3 Festo Introduction to Mechatron. This is an industry-recognized certification that allows our team to understand real-world applications in advanced training.
And your team didn't just stop there. You expanded your reach to include two sixth and seventh grade FLL Girl Scout teams. This certification uses the same technology found in factories all over the world, so the participants can learn more about the real-life applications of STEM.
I agree. My second.
Wow, hosting an FLL regional and an FBLA workshop, what's your team not done?
You know, there's actually a lot. Every year, we set expectations that surpass our previous needs. This program is creativity and motivation. We do this at the Oak Creek High School STEM Club. The club houses the RTR team and all of our other projects like Trauma Kit, FarmBot, National Light Out, and ParadeBot, ensuring that all members of our team can participate at a level of comfortability during the season and off-season too.
And one event that's part of the STEM club is the Steam Fair?
Yes. In 2019, we created the Oak Creek Steam Fair. This event, joined district-wide, is both a STEM fair and an art fair. We're even able to host it virtually during COVID, awarding a total of $17,500 in scholarships over three years.
Wow, this first impact is incredible, but how are you spreading the word?
This month alone, we reached over 2,000 people on YouTube. Through our weekly announcement, we also incorporated social media outreach by marketing.
Doubling our social media presence.
On Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn, and YouTube. What we have done is impressive, but we are still looking for ways to grow and expand by continuing our mission of not only putting first in our local community, but the world.
Thank you.
Wow, it was very impressive and informative. Big fan of the STEM programs going on here in Oak Creek, and I mean, you're a leader in southeastern Wisconsin. You guys have done amazing things. And what, you been around about six years? About six, seven? So, you guys have come leaps and bounds. How many? Eight years. That was off a little bit.
We're eight now. Been that season, we're eight now.
But I like the values you set forward, the equity, inclusion, and this is really about the core values of what you said, and that was really safety, having fun, and learning. But you're really setting a path for all these individuals, not only yourself, but those behind you for these STEM stuff, and it's gonna run the world. It truly is gonna change and run the world. So, kudos to you and your program. Anyone? Rich? Anything? Lisa?
No, I just appreciate you guys coming out. Thank you. I know it's a big, it's a big audience. And you're being recorded for posterity.
Anne?
I appreciate you guys being here. Your efforts are pretty impressive. Yes.
Thanks for coming out, guys, and thanks for the information you shared. Bryce, thank you. So, again, very impressed. You guys actually really shocked me, you know? You were so quiet to introduce yourselves, and then all of a sudden, we got the stage show. But again, I think our future looks very bright when I see individuals like you. I'm very proud that you're in our community and you're helping foster these values going forward. It really does mean a lot, because sometimes when you're a younger person, older people tend to go, "We never did that." But you guys are really, really setting yourselves up for a lot of, lot of future success going forward. Stuff's gonna stay with you forever, so. Kudos, and to you leaders out there that put the time and effort in to mentor these young people. Thank you very much. So, we appreciate that from all of you, without a doubt. Oak Creek's in good hands. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Getting to something really fun for some. Max is smiling. Item six is consideration of an ordinance fixing the salary and wage ranges, salaries, wages, and allowances of certain full-time and part-time labor associates, or of Wisconsin or law, and their nonrepresented positions for the year 2022, so. Max?
You kick it off, Max?
Oh, I'm sorry. Was I going to Andrew first?
That's okay. No, I just want to say a few words about this group and turn it over to Matt and Max. We're kinda gonna triple-team this, this conversation tonight. This is just a continuation of the strategy and thought process that we brought to you with a few other groups, but this DPW group has always been a group that's dear to me. Three communities I've worked at, what I've noticed is DPW handles everything else, right? We haven't yet got a police officer to go out and pick up a dead deer, or, you know, I certainly haven't been in a plow truck in my career using it. They really do, they're really the unsung heroes. They don't get a lot of the accolades that, you know, some of the other groups in the city do who are very visible out in the community, but they do a lot of work and they do a lot of hard work, and particularly this community, you know? Our folks, our residents, our business owners, our visitors, really don't know how, how much we spoil them with our public works services here. Seen a lot of improvement, a lot of culture shift in my six years here out at that group, and I see really good things coming out of Matt's leadership and what that can bring to this group. But what we're, what we're really trying to do tonight, and I know Max will cover this in full, you know, I really noticed that we, we were creating jobs at DPW and we weren't creating careers, and this strategy is laden with an opportunity for folks to come into our organization, demonstrate their skills, knowledges, knowledge, and abilities, and really be able to progress. As you know, we have kind of three traditional spots for our skilled folks. That is laborer-driver, equipment operator one, and equipment operator two. Those aren't very prominent titles, so you'll see that we're changing those up too and being a little more in line with modern nomenclature. But what we saw was we had quotas, if you will, at equipment two. We had quota of number of bodies at equipment one, and the folks coming in as, as laborer-drivers, as we presently call them, had nowhere to go upward, even though they were a lot of times using the same equipment, just as proficient. They had nowhere to go until somebody retired, passed away, or was otherwise no longer with the city. So, we're trying to change that on its head. We have a really strong group out there of experienced mentors and crew leaders, and we really have a new, a new group, younger group that are very eager and very dedicated and loyal to the city and the department. So, obviously, we're talking about compensation, but I thought I wanted to just provide that, you know, this, this is really more about career building and retention as it is as, as much as it is, you know, taking a leap forward, because as you see, entry-level wages here again are, you know, almost embarrassingly low. So, with that, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to Max to go through a brief presentation, and I'll probably chime in again later, but.
So, on this first slide, you'll see the Department of Public Works and its existing wage rates for both. We've kind of classified them in two categories, our laborer and operator positions. So, those are the three positions, skilled positions. And briefly, you can see what the hourly rates currently are. You know, the one thing really for the common council to understand, this is one of the few groups in the city, there isn't a wage range. This is a fixed rate currently, and this is what it adds. So, you start out working in Department of Public Works as a laborer-driver, currently making $19.13, but then you see a significant increase once you get to operator one, and then operator two. Operator one up to $25.87, and then $31.26. As we've talked about in previous comp analysis, that the expectations for compensation and benefits change over time, and, you know, being three levels with significant increases and very small opportunities to progress unless someone separates or someone leaves is just not as attractive as it used to be. People are looking for more opportunities for growth earlier in their careers, and some just not willing to stick it out, try and progress to that next. And then at the bottom, you can see the rates for all of the other existing staff, except the director of Public Works, and that's just more for the common council. Director ranging from about $37 to $41. And you can see some of our regular labors have a starting rate as well as about $12. Which certainly creates challenges when we're trying to recruit seasonal positions at 14. So, trying to recruit seasonals at higher rates. So, when we did our compensation analysis, we looked at peers in both Milwaukee County. We also included some peers outside Milwaukee County, so Caledonia, Las Vegas, as well as the West Bend Classification Compensation Study, so a little bit broader network here. What you see is a min, minimum rate, a mid-rate, and a max rate. And really, for our purposes, I would say the minimum rate is probably akin most to what we have as our laborer-driver position currently. The mid-rate, similar to the equipment operator one, and then the max rate, the equipment operator two. What's really challenging about this type of analysis is that every community does it different. Some just have one position title with a wide range, and they progress through. Others have different position titles, and when we were trying to sort through the data, really trying to get an apples-to-apples comparison was challenging, but we did eventually get there. And what you'll see is that the average hourly rate is about $22.16 amongst that peer group. The mid-rate at $27.36, and then $32.36. So, what you'll see on the bottom table is where Oak Creek currently stands. Again, the min-rate, laborer-driver, we're at $19.13, so we're about $3.14 lower. Then you'll see that we're the lowest of all the peer groups. Everyone else is $20, mid-rate at $25.84, or $87, and then $31.26. So, about $1.50, $25 under, about 4.5%. So, you know, we're just not keeping up on that starting rate, but, you know, where our current operator ones and twos are at, it's barely competitive in the market, but again, we still want to make some minor adjustments there, and get better aligned with the market. So, as Andrew mentioned in his introduction, really, our recommendation is a little bit different than some of the past compensation analysis. First, we really wanted to rebrand that DPW labor operator title, really better align with what we're seeing in the public sector for similar-type jobs. So, we do have a proposal to adjust those titles, as well as create ranges for the new positions within that structure. And it's really two-fold. So, one, it's gonna give management the flexibility to progress employees through the wage range as employees acquire new knowledge skills. So, that's really one of the challenges we have here, which is having a fixed amount per position, is that we could have a laborer-driver who's operating heavy equipment potentially and not earning as much as someone who might be in an operator one or two position. Not. So, we're trying to create a pathway that as an employee earns, or learns more, or gains more knowledge, learns more skills and abilities, that they can progress and pay as well. So, DPW management will be working on this assessment center process, so we don't have that ironed out today, but that will be presented to personal finance committee at a later date. Then, for the employee, it really, it better defines that career path for them. Mentioned, with the current structure, we just have the three positions. Wait for a vacancy, trying to allow it so that we can grow high performers within our organization. Now, I'll turn it over to our introductory director, Matt Travitoski, and provide a little bit more details on, on how we came.
Got it. See if it comes on here. Is it on? All right. Yeah, I think I'll just kind of add a little bit to what both Andrew and Max have, have stated, but I think currently under the pay structure with just the three different positions, there's really that limited opportunity for advancement with, with our employees. And really, those, those rates have such large gaps between them. We have about a 35% increase between our laborer-driver to go as operator one and another 21% to go as an operator one and operator two. So, while that's great when that opportunity finally comes if you're, if you're the person to get that position, it makes it difficult for those who are around here for an extended period of time when we have a quota system in place for those positions and can't get to that until, as Andrew alluded to, until someone retires or leaves the, the organization.
Also, Matt, on that point too, and think of this, you're also vying against eight or 10 other people for that chance once every few years when it, when it comes open. So, I mean, that's no shoe-in by any means, and, you know, you're gonna have to perform, of course, to, to get that promotion, but that leaves a lot of very high-performing folks, you know, outside looking in as well, so.
Correct, and then, and also, you could be there up to, and we have a few people going on five years that, you know, are kind of teetering on that edge of, do I stick around here or is, are there better opportunities elsewhere? But, you know, someone could walk in the door tomorrow and make the same rate as that they've been making when they've been with the organization for five years, obviously, acquiring a lot more experience and skills and training throughout that period of time. So, moving forward with the proposed position and ranges that, that we'll get into, will allow for a better career progression as we do put forth that assessment center and offer that defined path, and really a reason for the employees to stay and potentially make a career here if they choose to. So, really, I think what we've gotten, we're gonna cover, should be a lot more equitable for all of the employees, not just our ones who have been fortunate to be here while in the top echelon of our positions, we'll call it. But it'll allow us to, the ability to retain those good employees that, that have been with us for quite a period of time, but just haven't had the opportunity to advance, but yet.
And lastly, there were some other personnel out at Public Works that we also wanted to take a look at. Didn't do as much, as robust of a compensation analysis, but there were some key principles we wanted to make sure that we hit on. One, just to alleviate some compression amongst management and frontline personnel. So, compression is an issue that you often see either with union management relationships or historic union management relationships. We're starting to experience that here. Our personal finance committee, we did address wage compression with our police and fire union management and staff, and we're looking to do very similarly with our, with our public work staff. And then lastly, ensure that all of our regular part-time employees earn a minimum of $16. So, these aren't the seasonals, these are our regular part-time employees. The fact that, you know, we're trying to recruit seasonal positions at about $14 plus, which is higher than some of those regular part-time workers, certainly want to put them closer towards that. So, what you'll see here are three tables. These are the proposed positions, as well as rates. So, you'll see at the top, the three positions are a public works technician, which would replace the laborer-driver, and then the public works advanced technician would replace operator one, and the public work specialist would replace the equipment operator two. And then you'll see there are ranges that are defined in there. So, the minimum starting rate for a public works technician would be $21.61, and they can go up to about $24.32. That equipment operator one formerly would be the advanced technician, a minimum starting rate of $25.29, and then you can see that maximum rate of $29.39. And lastly, equipment operator two would be rebranded as the public work specialist, minimum rate of $30.57 up to $31.72. The second table kind of shows you the current rate of where those former titles are, what we're proposing, and then what we anticipate their wage rate would be in 2023, given the common council boards and the budget. So, you'll see that for that public works- So you'll see that for that public works technician, we would get over twenty-two dollars, uh, shortly, the next six months, and then twenty-six dollars, just under twenty-seven dollars for the advanced technician. Dollars and fifty-two cents for the specialist. And then you can see what that average increases. See, you know, the average increase is pretty significant for those entry-level positions, given that we're just so low in the market. But, um, when we look at how these new wage rates, uh, would look in the market, we're still two and a half percent below what that average is. There was one or two communities that were starting at twenty-four dollars plus that were kind of skewed the lower end of the market. But, you know, once we're able to implement the twenty-twenty-three rates, uh, we'll be much better, much closer to that market.
Just to, if you want to back up quick, um, to kind of nutshell this, we mentioned, you know, the, really what we're, we're talking about here is the ability for a public works technician rather, uh, um, and, and advanced technician. We're blending those two positions essentially, and you get demonstrate, you demonstrate the abilities through the assessment center, which will stand up. Those people all, everybody can move from currently twenty, if this goes forward, twenty-one sixty-two all the way up to twenty-nine thirty-nine. So there's no quota, those people have an eight-dollar, uh, per hour spread that they can gain with their demonstrated abilities. Where we do maintain the quota is public work specialist. Public work specialists are really crew leader-type people, and of course, everybody doesn't need to be, you know, get to crew leader. Chiefs and no, no Indians, so to speak, so, uh, but that it, there is still a two-dollar, almost two-dollar and fifty-cent spread between a crew leader and those who he or she is leading, uh, in, in the field. So we think that that was appropriate. But as Max had mentioned, you know, we're still a little bit below the market at two and a half. Uh, A, he mentioned there was a couple of communities that were in the twenty-four-dollar range, which really skewed those numbers. Um, but B, as he also mentioned earlier, we did not go in with a s- a scalpel and analyze everybody, all of these communities and what their assessment centers are and how people advance. There's certain of these communities that don't have any advancement. They have titles and you get, you gain a different title, you gain a different pace scale. Um, or you hire in from outside at a different title and, you know, there isn't, there isn't necessarily, uh, what we would like to stand up. We know that, but there's also communities in this study that are completely sophisticated and will probably borrow from their logic and their strategy and their methods for advancing these folks through the department. Uh, but the way we looked at this, we looked at labor rates, right? So we looked at the spread of labor, we looked at what it was all the way up to the crew leader positions or the highest level in these other organizations. And we arrived at that twenty-one sixty-two to twenty-nine, whatever, for everybody but those crew leads. Um, as you see where we started from, we were really low entry level, and then it got a little better as we progressed through, you know, our equipment one and, and equipment two. Um, but we certainly wanted to address and get everybody closer to, uh, where we, where we thought folks needed to be and where the study yielded that we, we need to get to.
And on this next slide, I just want to show those other DPW personnel that we did take a look at, what their proposed rates would be. So you can see, you know, anywhere ranging increases from about eight percent, uh, down to about two and a half, three percent. Again, really the two factors here are trying to alleviate some compression between management and frontline staff and then trying to ensure that all of our, uh, regular part-time individuals earn sixteen dollars.
Max? Question, I was looking at this, I just noticed, uh, in the table middle of page five, relative to the table at the bottom of the page, there's a few proposed wage rate adjustments as of one-one-twenty-three that were higher than the max rate. Will those be adjusted, uh, at the wage ordinance at the end of the year then?
Yes. And just looking at, how does this layer into our twenty-twenty-three budget? Uh, so our projected allowable increase, uh, is about a million dollars. Go cost of adjustment, actually, five percent for all city employees, about five hundred eighty thousand. And all of the previously approved market adjustments, about a hundred and seventy-three thousand. Um, it does seem a little low, but we also, uh, decided to kind of spread out the dispatch, uh, comp analysis on that over a two-year period, we used some sort of plus funds we talked about at our, our first last month. And then you can see the market adjustments for our DPW staff, about a hundred and sixty-three, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So what would be remaining at the, uh, start of our budget is about.
This does provide us some capacity to move folks in the progression as we stand up that assessment center and all the Personnel and Finance Committee members are on board with those criteria. Uh, certainly to just call it out right now, we're, longevity has nothing to do with advancing through, uh, the, the progression. It's demonstrated, uh, demonstrated abilities on pieces of equipment, leadership, attitude, positive performance reviews overall, successive positive performance reviews. Um, so this is not by any means going to resemble a step system. There just happens to be steps that are tied to actual data and, and performance metrics. Um, we did allow, you know, we kind of took a little bit of a snapshot of, okay, given the, given the folks that we have out there right now and, and their, their, uh, experience, we have a budget in that one-sixty-three to say, hey, where there's probably five people at that step or four people at the step. So we do have some ability, not just to stand up the, the, the logic and the method of the progression, but as soon as we stand that process up, uh, actually start working people into it. We have a budget to do that in that allowable market adjustment as well, so.
Well, with that, uh, the Personnel and Finance Committee recommend the Common Council Approval Ordinance Number Forty-Six, which would fix the salaries, wage ranges, salaries, wages allowances, certain full and part-time labor associations in Wisconsin and non-represented positions. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions common council might have.
All right, thank you, Max. Uh, questions, comments?
Just a comment, because, uh, you, you three, only, only Steve and I were privy to the conversation last week in the first one, in the meeting. So obviously an evolution in the sort of the, we've, we've had a couple of these already, uh, studies done with the admin team, we've had the dispatch center, we've done wage adjustment already, and this is an evolutionary process in terms of looking at the DPW where obviously they were, uh, it's probably the third, at least the third wage adjustment we've done since the act, ten days and the elimination of the step program. I know that caused a lot of angst and pain in that organization. We've evolved and adjusted over time and looking at continuity in that particular organization in terms of creating careers and making it worth, uh, folks' time to, to actually stay there, learn some skills and be added to the city. Uh, a great step in terms of providing some continuity and some, uh, some financial gain for the commitment they have, the services provided to the city.
I, I was just going to say, I'm glad you, um, took this on and, um, it's long overdue. I, I think when we, when we look at just the, um, where we are and where we need to go, um, I think it allows us to really, um, gives us the opportunity to help, uh, engage the, the employees along the way, uh, and give them the opportunity to see which path they want to take, so I'm very appreciative of this. Thank you.
Um, I had the opportunity to go and visit with Matt at DPW the other day and kind of read this just coming in. Um, one of the things that was said that was so striking is that our DPW is really the base part of the community. They're out there all the time. So, uh, this is a good.
Chris, anything?
Just a comment that, that we've been discussing throughout our Personnel and Finance meetings. This is today's world, uh, this is the marketplace. This was a necessary step. The question that I have, and I don't know that I do understand, is because I haven't been around with the cost of living adjustments that were forecasted for twenty-twenty-three. I, I mean, is two and a half, is that a realistic figure? Uh, given that, isn't it typically somehow based on CPI?
We, we, we wish, uh, this year.
So the cost of living adjustments are, are just amounts that, well, for non-represented employees would be decided by management and then incorporated into the budget. Um, but it's really based off our ability to what we can afford. So, you know, municipalities in Wisconsin, we have a lot of constraints on our revenues. We operate under levy limits. Property taxes, largest revenue source to net construction, which is growth in the community. It's been blessed with very high level construction relative to the rest of the state. Four percent, three percent, last year was two-point-seven percent. I think we're getting closer to two-point-three percent. But we can't afford too much more than two and a half percent.
Okay, that's what was my concern.
Given the constraints, the, the state levies on us. So ultimately, we would love to try and manage. It's just not a reality in the.
We, we gave, we toyed, well, no, number one, we, for the past six years, have given everybody the same cost of living adjustment. Essentially matching the bargain wages with the police and fire units. Next year, our police and fire, uh, contracts are at a one percent, one percent split. So, I mean, effectively two percent, but with a little weight. Um, and, and we don't think that this time that we're going to be able to hold the rest of the non-represented workforce to the, to the one-one split. So we left a little bit in there. We had, secondly, we had a lot of discussion about, you know, maybe we just need to pull back and say, hey, let's, let's go at, let's go to like four percent and just, you know, improve organization-wide. But that then didn't leave money left over to surgically address these glaring issues. And we would have just been kicking and exacerbating the problem down the road on some of these because as you can see, you know, four percent would do nothing to get us in line i- i- in any of the analyses we brought forward. Some was the custodians were twenty-seven percent low to the market. So, you know, what was four percent going to do to really clean up the problem as opposed to just furthering, uh, the problem proportionately down the road? So, you know, we hope we can afford a two and a half for, for, for everyone. Um, but that's kind of the logic and the thought process that went into that. Why we, um, you know, why we, uh, went with these more surgical kind of assessments and, and, and up market adjustments than a, a hire across the board for everyone.
And I appreciate that clarification. I, I know that there was discussions that, um, two, three, four, five, six years ago, CPI was less than one percent. That was the increase that was then given to the employees, is that, or the non-rept employees. Is that correct? For the most part?
CPI has been negative.
Right.
Before, um, in a, in a, a year where, you know, we were sitting with the meet and confer group, the law group, and we're at zero, you can't do much more, uh, because of the law. But, um, again, we've matched across-the-board cause for everybody represented and non-represented the past five or six years. Um, we may deviate a little bit from that, uh, but, you know, we don't know exactly all the other budget pieces yet either. We do know WRS going up again to the tune of, you know, over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we'll say. So we have to factor in all of these, but we also know there's more, there's revenue adjustments that can be made, obviously with the interest rates where they are. That means we're going to make more on our investments as well, so we can kind of strategize. But again, it goes back to that multi-year budget process and outlook. And we wouldn't be able to do any of this if we didn't have the debt levy reduction strategy, if we didn't solve for the last year for this year's, uh, additional kind of cut to our, our, uh, transport, general transportation adds. You know, we've solved for those other things that, that we could, uh, to put us in a position to even make these adjustments. And then, of course, our growth, right? Uh, everybody's not enjoying the, this flexibility in their annual budgets. But this flexibility, as, as Max put forward, that long-term analysis on, you know, net new construction requirements just to hit a good cost of living for our workforce as our wages grow, um, and that, that's not sustainable. So, um, we, we got to even think more longer term than, you know, three and five years down the road. We really got to take that ten-year outlook with our budgeting practices.
And I, again, appreciate that clarification. I just, now I understand that, that, uh, CPI doesn't dictate what the wage rates are going to be. Just use them as, as a tool, I guess, of comparison to what would be fair or not. So, okay, I'm, I'm okay with the explanations and thank you.
Steve, anything?
Uh, no, I was involved in the, uh, the meeting last week, so I'm, I'm okay with everything.
Yeah.
And I understand why we're doing it and how we're doing it, so I'm good with it.
Yeah. Um, I, for one, I'm really glad to see this. I was not a fan of the old system. It provided no upward mobility for anybody coming into our organization at all. Pigeon-holed people and didn't work. And contrary to popular belief, you know, sometimes the public says, oh, they're not doing their jobs. These are their careers. Our DPW takes great pride in what they do at all levels. You know, people always look at it as a job. It's actually their chosen career. They should be able to, um, you know, e- expand that career and have a family-supporting job out of it. And, you know, it was possible to come into this organization and sit for fifteen, twenty years at that low rate. No one, no one can raise a family. You just can't. So I, I, for one, I know it doesn't correct everything, but I do think it's a step in the right direction. And I don't look at it as an expense, I look at it as an investment. Investment in our greatest asset, and Lisa said it, you guys are really ambassadors to the city, you're out there all the time. And I can tell you, the majority of my calls come in concerning issues people have with DPW things. And they're not seriously things that went wrong at DPW, it's just, when you come in from my branches? Today it was my branches and my truck was leaving or something. It, it's goofy, but they, they deal with the public a lot, you know, on the same level as police and fire do. So, um, I'm glad to see it and always support it, so, nice job, everyone. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh, it'd be a motion on six.
It'll move to approve ordinance three-zero-four-six fixing the salary and wage ranges, salary, wages and allowances of certain full-time and part-time labor association of Wisconsin and not, non-represented positions for the year two thousand twenty-two.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Duke Niak.
Hi.
Marshall.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
And item seven is consideration of a motion with the Park and Recreation Commission, uh, and select edgewater resources to create a study and plan of the redevelopment of the public recreation space for the city of Oak Creek North Bluff in the amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars, like Doug's taking it for us.
So if you all think back to the evolution of how Lake Vista developed, and it was a long process, granted, but there was, uh, a plan. There was public investment, there was preservation of the critical areas for open space, which was followed by the private investment. If you go out there today, you'll see lots of activity and in a few weeks' time, you'll see buildings starting to rise up out of the ground. That process, uh, what we wanted to, uh, kind of establish the playbook for how we're approaching what we call the North Bluff. Right now, I really imagine that, right? North Bluff, South Bluff. But it really is, uh, if you, if you think of all the things that this council has already done in terms of acquiring the thirty acres along the lakefront, so that, that's public space forever. Uh, working with property owners to develop a plan to clean up, uh, their properties, uh, specifically Peter Cooper, and now working with some of the other intervening property owners there, uh, that's exactly what happened with the South Bluff. Uh, making those bold investment choices to acquire the Peter Cooper property, uh, in anticipation of the investment that you're going to make in that North Bluff. And finally, planning for what that is and capturing that investment that you've made in terms of the private development that's going to occur on the North Bluff. So. So, all in all, we're probably a decade behind where we are in the South Bluff, but I think we're in a really good position right now to take some steps that will, uh, uh, really bear fruit in the coming years in addition to everything else that's been happening, you know, with, uh, with the North Bluff and the lakefront. And this is really part of that. The strategic plan really called for, uh, making some, some public investments, uh, uh, in the lakefront and to market that on a more regional or national scale. In order to do that, you need to really have a, a, a good plan. And for the capital CIP for this year, uh, staff advocated for the money to engage a consultant to prepare, prepare that public plan. Now, we're not, what we're not doing, we're not planning the Peter Cooper property. And we're not, uh, going to that same level of detail. What we're doing is planning that public space. What do we want that to be? It's an amazing opportunity to do some really unique things and to capitalize on the, on the investment that you're already making in terms of the cleanup, the bluff stabilization. I think as Andrew's put it in, in occasions, at the end of the day, do you want to spend X on stabilizing a bluff for just walking away? And say, okay, we, we stabilized the bluff, now what? Or do you want to leverage that investment to have a, a regional park attraction and, uh, something that will, again, leverage that in more private investment, uh, much like Lake Vista parked it. Uh, gladly, uh, the council chose the latter. And, uh, we are looking to engage Edgewater Resources to do that planning study. Excuse me, Edgewater Water was one of four very talented firms that submitted responses to RFP. And, you know, um, each one of those firms could have done a great job for us, but when we looked at, from a staff perspective, I mean, who would be the best fit? And we didn't just do it, uh, and go by our guts. We applied some analytics to that in, in terms of, uh, scoring the East consultant team on project vision and initial concept development, team qualification experience, proposed methodology and approach, understanding the city's history and the current status of the lakefront planning efforts. That was a big one. Time frame and completion dates. And finally, number six is proposed fees and costs. Uh, so when all those factors were considered, and we put that to a number of you and a number of staff, sorry, uh, it, a pretty clear frontrunner emerged, and that was Edgewater Resources. We felt that they, uh, not only did they have familiarity with the city and the processes involved in the North Bluff, but they also showed us a glimpse of what could be. And that was perhaps as important as their prior history. So with that, we, uh, made our, uh, scoring, we made a recommendation to Parks and Recreation Commission. And at their meeting last, last, last Thursday, uh, they, they concurred and they recommended that council engage Edgewater Resources to prepare the North Bluff planning study. And we're hopeful that the council will concur and that we can move this forward, uh, to, again, develop what we all think will be a, a major regional asset and, uh, something that will leverage that investment as something very special on the Peter Cooper property and the properties that intervene. Have you answered any questions or comments?
Questions for Doug.
Can I just add something quick, Mayor? That's okay. Um, Edgewater and with the reason we're asking for an additional small amount of buffer, universally, Edgewater, uh, was the frontrunner and I think eighty percent, four out of five of us that reviewed the, um, with the scoring rubric, many others commented. They didn't have a very well-defined public participation plan, and the timeline was a little condensed to our discomfort. Uh, and, and we think that, uh, and, and we didn't negotiate, obviously, we can't do that, um, in, kind of in between the award and the submittal and the award. But we thought we would expand upon that public participation and public input and just make sure that they are aware that we do not need a plan for this in twelve weeks. Um, this can take the better part of the, and, uh, the end of twenty twenty-two to have the right plan, to have the right public participation. Uh, we think that they were a little bit influenced by the fact that we know we do need a bluff stability project sooner than later. Um, you know, the, the clock is ticking on that a little bit, uh, but we can work out those, uh, those understandings with them in a final proposal. But we did ask for an additional bit of money. One of the things that really separated Edgewater was if you looked in the back of their, near the back of their proposal, they had a permitting environment matrix. So we want to be bold, we want to be aspirational, aspirational with these projects. These projects don't need to be something we can build in two years. It, it, these are seventy-five-hundred-year assets, multi-generational amenities for, uh, the community and the region. You know, we can take some time on this and do it in phases, but they did a, a permitting matrix. And they said, if you dreamt the coolest thing ever, we'll be able, we have the resources available for you to s- you know, say, don't do that because you're never going to get that permitted. Or, you know, it's a little challenging and it's a little expensive, but it's doable with all the king's horses and powers that be, be in the bureaucracy. Um, I really liked that because, you know, I think we, we, we can dream big, but we also cannot publish a plan that we can't execute in the end. And Edgewater, we believe, has the resources at the shoreline, uh, specifically to help us through, uh, you know, dreams versus realities.
Uh, questions, comments?
The only comment, um, what an incredible read that the RFP was. Been honestly excited to begin to see some of those ideas that they're going to put forward to us. Uh, there's probably one of the biggest questions that I get asked by constituents, invested all this money on the lakefront. What the heck are we going to see, something happening down there? And it's actually refreshing to now have something to be able to tell people that the work is now beginning, right? And it, it has begun, but actually, the concept of what it might look like, uh, some of the project photos that they have from some of their past work. Amazing, the, the little pocket beaches that were on there. Envisioning those down at the lakefront. I was just in Florida and then those pocket beaches were on, were in several of the state parks that we visited. So, um, it's amazing to see how this group will be able to put a, a vision or plan that you thought, oh, that's only going to work at, at a motion, like, right here at, uh, at our doorstep and at Lakeview. Really looking forward to what they're going to come up with.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, just looking through that report, Doug, I appreciate the work you did in that RFP proposal. Um, pretty impressive, listed credentials of the, of the principals of the firm, uh, read very well. And the, uh, project list that they've been associated with in the past is pretty impressive. Looking forward to some good ideas and some great, uh, some great progress down there. Appreciate it.
No, I, I concur with, um, all the statements that have been made. Uh, looks like we're headed in the right direction again and again. This is, uh, just the first step in what it could be down there. But we have to envision what it may be and then. Kudos to the Parks Department and our staff for narrowing it down and getting this moving, so. No further discussion, motion.
Marshall moves to agree with the Parks and Recs Commission and select Edgewater Resources to create a study and plan of redevelopment of public recreational space for the City of Oak Creek North Bluff in the amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
And item eight is consideration to concur with the mayor's reappointments of the following individuals to the library board, which is a three-year term. Uh, Sharon Armstrong and Jill Meyer. Questions, comments? Um, I'd like to thank these two individuals. I do call them up, make sure that they, they do want to stay engaged and thank them for their service. And they've been long, long-term board members, and I thank them for that. The city's far better off for their leadership than not having them, so. That being said, motion.
He'll move to concur with the mayor's appointment, reappointments as listed.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And nine is under treasurer and it's consideration of a resolution, rescinding resolution number one-one-eight-one-seventeen. Oh, I'm sorry, one-seven, dash zero-six-zero-six-one-seven, and restating public depositories for the City of Oak Creek. Ax.
Thank you, Mayor and common counsel. Uh, so before each, tonight's a resolution that would restate the City of Oak Creek's public depositories. So by Wisconsin statute, uh, we have to have a list of approved public depositories filed. Um, and the reason that we're doing this is really twofold. So, uh, first, in December of last year, we were notified by BMO Investment Services that they were going to be ceasing their advisory operation, so their investment management. Um, and what we did at that time is we transferred, uh, those assets over to Dana Investment Services. Uh, so they've been invest, managing those investments since January of this year. Uh, but BMO is still technically the custodian of those funds. Um, and BMO's proposal to continue to be the custodian of those funds is fifteen thousand dollars a year, um, which is pretty exorbitant. And, uh, it just seems like BMO is trying to exit the investment and, uh, investment space. And, and I don't think they can legally just cease custodial, uh, services. So I think what they're doing is probably just trying to charge a very large fee, uh, to have, to force some of their former clients to move on to a new custodian. So, um, what we're looking to do, uh, is have those funds move over to Charles Schwab, who would offer custodial services at no cost to the city. Um, and then second, uh, we also have some investments through Eller's Investment Partners. Um, and they were formerly using TD Ameritrade as the custodian. Um, TD Ameritrade was acquired by Charles Schwab. And when that occurred, it really allowed Eller's, uh, personnel to really evaluate the marketplace for both the management and custodial of, of their portfolio. Um, and they decided to, uh, move forward with Pershing Advisor Solutions LLC. Uh, that firm specializes in municipal, um, investments, so, uh, but more niche than, say, what TD Ameritrade or Charles Schwab does. Uh, so what this resolution does is it would take off TD Bank, uh, as well as TD Ameritrade and MNI and BMO as custodians, and then it would add, um, Charles Schwab and Pershing Advisory Solutions LLC as custodian. So with that, happy answer, any questions the common council may have?
Questions for Max? Pretty good explanation there. Okay, uh, seeing no discussion, motion please.
He'll move to approve resolution one-two-three-three-seven-dash-zero-six-two-one-two-two, rescinding resolution number one-one-eight-one-seven-dash-zero-six-zero-six-one-seven and rescinding public depositories for the Cityville Creek.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
And item ten is license committee, I'll turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski. Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the information on the common council report for tonight. Does anybody have any cares, questions or concerns? All right, seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two license committee report.
Marshall, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And item eleven is to consider a motion to approve the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two vendor summary report. The amount of one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred, eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Please look over, um, the page in your packet, and if there's any questions, uh, just direct it at the person best able to answer. And when you're satisfied, there's no questions, errors, corrections, discussion, motion.
He'll move to, uh, approve the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two vendor summary report in the amount of one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred, eight dollars, seventy-nine cents.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye. Here. Just thought for you, uh, when I've asked the city attorney if we could reentertain the approval of minutes of the previously held, now that Alderman Kirkowski is here?
Oh.
Unless you want to just maintain.
Excuse me. Um, I think that the issue that Alderman, Gail is referring to is that earlier, not believe that there was a quorum, so it was held to the next meeting. It's at the pleasure of the council, I would say, if they wanted to make that motion now. It's rather, um, apparent that we now have Alderman Kirkowski with us. So it'd be improper in terms of the nature of what that is to entertain a motion with the council's secrets.
If you were at the meeting, right, the June seventh meeting?
July seventh, yeah, I believe, yeah.
Okay.
Well, uh, we'll do it after twelve, we'll finish up the.
Yeah, I was here.
Uh, item twelve is consideration of a resolution authori- authorizing the payment of Bill's debts and obligations. Ax, give him the Reader's Digest on that one?
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, we don't have a council meeting that, uh, first week of July, um, but we do have bills to pay. So what this authorizes us is for finance department to pay our bills. Uh, and then we'll have two vendor summary reports on our July nineteenth meeting agenda.
Okay. At that. Okay, uh, motion on twelve.
He'll move to approve resolution one-two-three-three-eight-dash-zero-six-two-one-two-two, authorizing payment of bills, debts and obligations.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
And now if you'd like to go back on the minutes of six, seven, twenty-two. Yes.
Good for that, counsel, you may want to consider a motion to reconsider a motion for approval of the minutes of June seven, twenty twenty-two as the first step, and then a motion on approval of the minutes.
He'll move to reconsider the vote to hold, item number three.
Marshall, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Now we'll need a motion to approve.
Marshall will move to approve the minutes of June seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item thirteen is consideration of a motion to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight-five, to discuss the following. Section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-G, to consider the proposed settlement of the city's claim filed against the estate of Thomas J. Junk um, in Waukesha County, case number two-zero-one-eight-P-R-four-five-seven. E, section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-G, to consider the suppo- proposed settlement in the Cityville Creek versus Wilhelm Enterprises Corporation at L, Milwaukee County, case number two-zero-two-zero-C-V-one-seven-three-zero. And C, section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-E, to consider the proposed term sheet between Ryan Business Park LLC and the City of Oak Creek for approximately thirteen point nine-three-six acres of property located at the corner of Thirteenth and Ryan Road. Uh, and Gail?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Gail moves to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five to discuss the following, A, section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-G, to consider a proposed settlement of the city's claim filed against the estate of Thomas W. Junk. B, section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-G, to consider a proposed settlement to the Cityville Creek versus Wilhelm Enterprises Corporation at L. C, section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-E, to consider a proposed term sheet between Ryan Business Park LLC and the City of Oak Creek for approximately thirteen point nine-three-six acres of property located at the corner of Thirteenth Street and Ryan Road.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
We'll now, uh, convene in the closed session and resume at its conclusion.
We convene in the closed session. If you're up, you'll be in the closed session. Guzakowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye. Aye.
And fifteen is consideration of any motion, uh, to take place from items thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor. He'll move to approve the settlement and authorize the mayor to sign the settlement statement and release in.
the settlement statement and releasing in the City of Oak Creek versus Wilhelm Enterprises Corporation at L, Milwaukee County, case number two-zero-two-zero-C-V-one-seven-three-zero.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And item sixteen is consideration of a resolution approving the shared maintenance and access agreement between the City of Oak Creek and F Street OC-LV LLC, Lake Shore Commons. Andrew?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so before the council this evening is the shared maintenance and access agreement. The little background on what we're attempting to do here, you all have dealt with this in your constituent work. The best laid plans for homeowner, home owner association, maintenance, and ownership.
The first thing.
Is, you know, it doesn't always work in the end when you have defunct governance out there and those homeowners associations, there're just no monies, or it wasn't ever fully established as it were supposed to in the covenants of that area or on the plat, et cetera. We really wanted to find a vessel, a vehicle, to capture what it is everybody was thinking when Lake Shore Commons was established in terms of which maintenance items are the responsibility of the city, which items are owned by the city, and conversely, which items are the maintenance responsibility of the developer slash eventual owners association, and which are owned by those. So I think the best way to go, and it also provides for cross-access, because there're certain things that we, as a city, would maintain, certain things the developer would maintain, that cross into public and private ownership, too. So that's the cross-access agreement, shared access agreement part of this. If you just go to exhibit, I think that sums it up the best, and then I'll hold for any questions as I know it's getting late. I can find the exhibit myself. Yeah, page one of the exhibit. So this area is very, very amenity, amenity-rich by intention. This traditional neighborhood design really only works when you have the density that we do here. Not, not as much in terms of personal yard space, but you also have swaths and areas of shared, common area. And for the most part, what we said was, listen, we don't want a gated community here. If this, if these areas of recreation, of reflection, of whatever, recreation is the best word, are connected to our larger park assets, then we don't want there to be any dispute whether the general public can use them, right? Of course, there're certain areas like the pool house and things like that that'll be more controlled, but certainly these walking areas and more passive recreation, you know, should be really enjoyed by all. We're not going to gate it with a, a key card to get in. So that was a value to us. But we had to really understand what is likely going to be utilized by the public, and what is really more centered on the neighborhood use of the area. And if you look at those areas that are in the middle in yellow, in the heart of this community, that larger blob of, of yellow is actually a, basically a neighborhood, a neighborhood park with court space and other things to be planned there. And we talked about the amenities plan with the Parks and Recreation Commission. They're like, you know, I don't see anybody driving from the other side of town to come to that park to play pickleball, or whatever amenity they have there. So originally, we were going to take on that as a neighborhood park and own and maintain it. And as you see, all of the yellow area there is one-hundred percent association, maintenance, and ownership. Where, then we got into, okay, well, well, let's talk about the arterial connectivity that we want on lakefront, on the lakefront, that we want to the Oak Leaf Trail, that we eventually want to the North Bluff, and eventually south, connecting with the Oak Leaf Park and into Bender Park, or Oak Leaf Trail and into Bender Park. The peripheral trail system and the appurtenances along the way will be enjoyed and accessible and inviting to the public. So that's where we got into ownership and maintenance responsibilities on that pathway and along the fringe of what is Lake Vista Park. If you see eight and five in the middle of the page there, there's like a hammock, hammock park, and a public art installation being planned there. You'll notice that iterative, iterations of this plan earlier, there was an amphitheater there, some sort of a band, a shell structure. We really think that if that's going to be part of the lakefront plan, which maybe it is, maybe it isn't, that that's probably somewhere where it's very clearly a public element that you can park near and you can walk up to and utilize. So that really does capture, but for the council's benefit, for the council's benefit, what we're really talking about here is taking on, in terms of ongoing maintenance, taking on plowing of the, of the trail around and up into a little bit of this development. You know, we were talking about that. We're like, we don't really want to do that. We probably won't do that immediately until there's a critical mass of people out here. But if, you know, when this thing builds out in, you know, four, or five, seven years, whatever the case may be, you know, you're probably approaching two thousand residents in this area. So we think that, you know, given the usage of that trail all seasons, all months of the year, that, you know, we, we can take on that responsibility to, to remove the snow and replace the capital assets when they meet their useful life, like the Ballard lighting. In the meantime, however, the, you'll see certain maintenance responsibilities of the developer, like, for instance, the energy costs of the Ballard lighting would be, it's like the Emmys saying, shut up and get off the stage.
Asphalt.
Yeah. You know, we would, they would be, they would, they would be responsible for the energy costs. Probably more important to this discussion is really the public and private rights of the key, which is the second page. So as we got into designing this neighborhood, this community, we realized that with traditional neighborhood, traditional neighborhood design, a lot of deployment of alleyways and private access driveways and things the city wanted no part of owning or no part of maintaining. So that second piece denotes, you know, in twelve years, while we're getting asked the question from the HOA president, can't you just go around the corner a little bit here and, you know, maintain these string of, I don't know, say, medians? Does that ring a bell? No, this is, you can, you can make a different policy decision, or that council can make a different policy decision later, but this is kind of our key to go back to and say, no, it was never intended that we would be owning or maintaining that alleyway or that circuit of streetlights, et cetera. So that's probably more critical from a cost standpoint than the first page of the exhibit, but just wanted to draw. That was, this was really the impetus for this, and then we were like, well, let's add the public amenities to that piece, too. So with that, we're trying to cast in stone what the agreement was way back when, and make sure that that's part of the record and archived. But that can be changed and reexamined over time. But this is what the parties have agreed to, the beginning of the development.
Andrew, straight lighting, there's ours.
So on the private and public right-of-way key, which is page two, anything you see in that salmon color is public right-of-way. So all traditional features of the right-of-way would be maintained by the city, as is other typical subdivisions, where you see it in the green. I don't know what, probably not all, but certain of those areas certainly have street lighting treatment. That would be one-hundred percent their ownership, maintenance, and cost for energy. Knockdowns, et cetera, on the streetlight per se, or street tree, that would be all the association's maintenance. It, it's also a fair trade between balancing, okay, what, given the scope of this project, what association would reasonably be able to control and maintain and afford via their fees without those being exorbitant versus, you know, what makes sense for the city to own and maintain and has its customary in a newly subdivided area.
And then the recreation stuff, picking tables, hammocks, all that, that's theirs?
Certain areas that are adjacent to the park, Mayor, like the area by the public art installation and the hammock park, where you're, you're, you're walking past that on the trail on Lake Vista, and you don't live there, and you see that and think you want to go enjoy that, although it's a little closer to the A-nine block of buildings, we've agreed to take responsibility for that. But other areas like garbage and, garbage collection, litter, landscaping of medians and planters and things like that that are in that middle yellow row, a hundred percent responsibility of the homeowners association eventually.
Of the, the shared maintenance agreement that the developer, she's, it's a little bit more, more, anything that would lessen their overall expenses. To mention about. Oh, I'm sorry, to the point of it not being affordable, that's already happened with the, the, the homes there. So I, I mean, they're comfortable with this, the shared maintenance agreement? They, they, they feel it's workable?
You know, we, we worked, you know, I, of course, they're always looking out for their interest, financial or other. We talked with Matt Travataski and Jeff Went at DPW. We talked with engineering. Everything that they didn't think made a ton of sense for us, we kind of put that back to the developer as feedback, and there wasn't a ton of, you know, hey, well, you know, this is going to put us over the top or something like that. So it was a very fair, you know, what makes the most sense, what's going to be convenient for either that party or us as a city to, to maintain. It was a pretty, it was, it was a pretty good give and take to, to come to the right product.
Yeah, yeah.
Andrew, I got two things, and mostly looking at this, and you can tell me if maybe I missed, didn't read it. There's two points where this specifically call out where the developer benefits if the city fails to act, but there's no call outs if, what we can do if the developer fails to act. One's on. Point four, and the other's four-point-two. As you. I'm just wondering if we have remedies in case one of those happens, where in fact they're responsible for some kind of financial damage that we would bear the brunt of.
So in your, as you know, this was a little bit of a, of a rush, given there's, there's no council meeting on July fifth or sixth, or whatever that is. Two-point-four is definitely the subject of some further revisions in favor of the city. I know that there's already been some softening of that language, but the, the, the resolution reflects changes approved by council and the city administrator that are not substantively different of the intent of your decision this evening. So we, we will certainly, I know those are in the queue to be discussed and ironed out a little bit, but we'll certainly look at both of those sections for.
Andrew, your discretion on that. And I know it's a little more obscure for point two, it's a little more obscure, but we do see time to time where folks damage city property. Is there a method or methodology to make sure that if it's a resident there, that they're financially liable for that? I don't know.
Oh, I, I think it's just, as long as the city isn't liable, I don't know that we would.
Well, it's, it's usually called.
Determine what the other party is.
The city is liable, but it doesn't call out where in fact the developer or the residents are.
Okay.
Kind of, no, it's a little more gray zone then, but somewhat.
Mayor. So Alderman Gail, I don't mean to go too deeply on it, but in terms of what you're thinking, is it sort of, you know, skateboarding on a city?
What if they dig a hole in the ground where they're not supposed to, and are, are they, you know, they break some public?
Capital asset or fixture that we're responsible for?
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, I think to Andrew's point, this is.
Run the car over some park benches and stuff like that, that are city maintained and city-owned, or?
Sure. And my initial thought was, you know, certainly we have a remedies under criminal statutes and local ordinances in terms of damage, criminal damage to property, things of that nature. I wasn't sure if that might be where you're going.
No, I just, it was, my point was, it was called out specifically where the city was liable, but it was not in the reverse.
Understood. And I don't mean to editorialize, but I guess I would say this is really unusual, like Andrew said. I mean, I think we're trying to anticipate, we can't prevent those responsibility issues, but I think that as representatives of your respective districts, we're always running into the issues of, isn't this city-owned property? Doesn't the city maintain this? And I think that there's certainly those pieces here where with the developer, there's been a really good intent in negotiation on Andrew's part to try to encapsulate that. We're not going to cover everything, and it's going to need to come back for some amendments, probably, you know.
They're never going to favor the city if they're coming back for amendments, but.
Well, and where I was going with that was, at the end of the day, we are not leaving this to be private development. This is not going to be a piece where, you know, the homeowners association that goes defunct, but it isn't the city's responsibility, because we know that those are the calls that you get, and we're trying to anticipate it. So I think that my point is that the flip side is, you know, that is part of the association responsibility, but we'll certainly explore that.
Good, otherwise, oh, yes, Steve.
Good.
Kuzi?
Good.
Okay. If there is no further discussion, motion on sixteen, please.
Marshall moves to adopt resolution one-two-three-four-zero-dash-zero-six-two-one-two-two, a resolution approving the shared maintenance and access agreement between the City of Oak Creek and F Street OC-LV LLC.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Okay, that will get us to adjournment. So, motion to adjourn.
That's a Fourth of July parade in here in the meantime, since we meet again.
Yeah, we'll have Fourth of July on the Fourth of July, obviously, ten AM, as normal.
May well the road be done?
So.
Did you?
There you go. One other thing worth mentioning, we will have an art installation of the American flag at Trecton Town Square. We'll unveil it eleven AM, July the second, at Farmers Market. That was graciously donated by the Grunel Company, and we kicked off our flag tour. So if you come to Town Square, you can take an educational flag walk with the banners. That was all donated by Eater Flag, and special thanks to the library for setting that tour up in DPW, so.
What time is that?
Probably eleven. Got to double-check with, with the market, but I think eleven, and see when Grunel can make it. All right, anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Marshall moves to adjourn.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderperson, Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.